Today is August the 25th and this is the collective committee meeting of Avon Lake. And before we start, I would like to just set the tone since we have a new chapter 220 that we have passed before we went on break that describes the type of meetings that we have. It says, "The Avon Lake City Council is committed to conducting the city's business in an open, transparent, and respectful manner that upholds the public's trust. Council must balance the public's right to free speech under the First Amendment with the need to maintain order and conduct the city's business effectively. Comments must remain focused on issues and avoid personal, impertinent, slanderous, abusive, discriminatory, harassing, or profane remarks. Criticism may be directed at actions but not at personal character. Speech that devolves into personal name-calling, insults, or attacks can be regulated when it undermines the forum's purpose or disrupts the proceedings. Violations of council's rules are disruptive to the orderly conduct of meetings. They delay city business, distract participants, interfere with the public's ability to listen and engage, and may chill the willingness of others to participate. In addition, such conduct may violate the city's anti-discrimination and harassment-free workplace policy. The presiding officer has the duty to protect council members, the administration, and staff from discriminatory or harassing remarks. Such conduct will not be tolerated." These comments are directed to all participants, council members, city staff, and members of the public. We're all expected to maintain civility. With the recent revision to Chapter 220, public input now takes place at the beginning of meetings. Members of the public may speak for up to five minutes on any topic except at work sessions where remarks must be limited to the topic under discussion. Offensive language will not be permitted. If such language does not cease after a warning, the speaker will forfeit the remainder of their time. Continued disruption may result in the individual being directed to leave the chamber. Public comments are a valuable part of our meetings and we welcome all viewpoints on city issues. However, this is not the appropriate forum to raise or resolve personnel matters involving individual city employees. Those concerns should be directed through the city's administrative or human resources processes. These guidelines ensure that public participation remains productive and that employees who are here to serve the community are not subjected to personal attacks in this forum. Public input is at this point in time, members of the audience shall be permitted to speak only once up to five minutes on any topic, and that's per our code, Section 220.11G1. Does anybody want to come up on any topic to speak on anything? Come on up, sir. Give us your name and the city that you're from. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Madam President, my name is Robert Baker. I'm from Avon Lake. Disabled veteran, disabled retired firefighter, former law enforcement officer, and the city's, fortunately, some of the city's actions are now causing me harm. I'm here tonight with two requests: for the city to provide temporary stay of action, violation of CVEG 25-59, and for the city to follow through on assurances to act. I made reasonable requests to proper channels to secure temporary stay of action, to which the mayor, I believe at this point, I do have a stay, but unfortunately, what I had is I had a reasonable amount of pushback, and I'm hoping at this point that we will address the request more fully, especially given the fact that from council to the mayor on down the line, I've been assured that the city's commitment to honoring agreements in the history of all properties. Though these words sound reassuring, as far as I can tell, my encounters with the new code enforcement division seems to find these words in any agreements in place irrelevant. A recent approach to code enforcement and disturbing content of a phone call were greatly concerning. While I'm no longer, oh, I'm sorry, I submit for the record, this, the letter dated 8/17/25 from Austin Page, which demonstrates Mr. Esborn vacating a previous similar order to remove vegetation based on the agreements made between myself, Mr. Brubaker, Mr. Page, and Mr. Esborn in 2023. Though it has been awkward to read, I direct your attention to passage reads, "The overgrown vegetation violation has been canceled and voided. This has been voided because we understand that former city staff have told you that natural grown to reoccur beyond the constraints of the property and along the right-of-way." Sorry, that was the awkward part. "Ted Esborn deemed it appropriate to void based on the past conversations. The only thing requested is if the vegetation extends into the street, it should be trimmed back at least to the edge of the pavement. At this point, I will ask the same thing I've asked of your code enforcement official. Please facilitate temporary stay of action of not more than 45 days so I may facilitate discussions with city officials that I have found were unaware of this issue, replace the agreement so that we have time to replace the agreement breached, and have time to transition to taking ownership, potentially taking ownership of the city's previously agreed responsibility. I also request the agreements being written as I'm starting to have issues with trust issues with the city of Avon Lake, unfortunately. Separately, I bring your attention to multiple unenforced orders to correct property damage caused by COF at my homestead, starting in 2018, and the unenforced agreement affected between council, myself, and COF during the approval process of portside improvement plan, in which COF was a coordinate with me through Mr. Baldi on the installation of mounding. Fortunately, the city has seven years from the first incident property damaged and three years since COF agreed to the mounding specification request, yet the city continues to avoid or has failed to ensure either addressed. Would you please, and without further delay, enforce the mounding agreement between us all and facilitate enforcement of the city's multiple orders to repair and replace damage to my southeast corner landscape, southeast corner tree lawn, southeast sidewalk from driveway apron to the new development and the driveway apron? I request that it's time to move past assurances and actually take action. When I presented our simple issues with simple solutions, please stop making them more complicated than they need to be. I look forward to this body's and the administration's response.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Baker?
No, ma'am. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come forward on any topic?
Hello, Vince Canonic of Avon Lake. I don't really have a comment, just a question. My understanding is that the Trans System Traffic Study should be complete by now, or I guess what I'd really like is just an update of the status of the Trans System Study. Whether you have any data back, yes or no, and if so, do you have any preliminary thoughts about it? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to transfer this over to Mr. Mayor because I have not seen anything, sir.
I can answer that now. I also have it on my former mayor's report, the council meeting. Contacted Trans Systems last week. So they have finalized the traffic counts. Those are internal, sorry, internal review right now. That should be done the first week of September. They're in the midst of finalizing the traffic routing for the four different options that we presented to them for Liberty Rose and for Hanford. They expect those results in the forthcoming weeks. At that point, we will work with them to schedule an internal meeting to go over all the scenario results and all the available information in conjunction with the existing condition findings, and then once that's complete, we'll schedule that public meeting. Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else come forward with any topic? Okay, at this point, then, we're going to go on with our agenda. We usually work in alphabetical order, and we just came out of a SERP meeting, so I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Shamir.
Good evening. We had an item that came through SERP which requires immediate action, and that is called the Server Refresh 2025 Contract for a total sum of $49,369.48, and I will ask Mr. Robert Rua to give us a quick brief on the requirements.
Thank you. This is a request to purchase two servers to replace aging servers that are located in this building. Servers being replaced were installed originally in 2016. They are at the end of life cycle, which means they no longer have security patch updates and other features are not being allowed, bug faces and things like that are no longer supported. This is the replacement of those two units, but then also the move of those units to the Avon Lake Police Department Server Room, where they'll be located where all the other servers are located, in that facility, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the server purchase and the move.
If I may, can you give us a detail of the reason we need to move it through as far as the contract is concerned?
Yes, thank you. So the reason is that we have a quote, and the pricing is good until Thursday of this week, therefore, we'd like to get the approval so we can keep that low pricing because we're giving a good price on these products.
Thank you, Robert Rua. Any comments?
Thank you, Chairman, because that's a good point of why we have to do it now.
Yes, thank you.
Do you have another item that came through?
No, that's it. The next item is going to move to next week.
Okay, okay. Good enough. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move along to the Finance Committee. Mr. Super is not here. As a member of that committee, there are two items that we're going to be talking about. The first one is the budget adjustment. So you know every year we have a budget, and throughout the year, there needs to be adjustments that are made, and the total adjustment that we're going to be voting on is $717,152.78, and I'm going to turn further discussion over to our Finance Director.
Thank you, Madam President. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of the larger adjustments. There is one for $305,000 for additional Walker Road Phase 5 costs due to that bid coming in a little bit higher than expected, and also, this has been discussed previously, but replacement of a fire department vehicle to include the wrap and decal for $43,350. And the other fairly large adjustment is just truing up our debt schedule with the new fire truck debt that was taken on this year, so that adjustment to debt is just under $200,000. Avon Lake Regional Water also has some budget adjustments that they're requesting at this time.
Thank you very much. And so this is going to be on a suspension of the rule and emergency passage so that it can be included in the report that has to go out for the budget.
Correct.
Council, any questions on this particular one? Okay, then we will move on to the next one. The next one is an opiate settlement, and my gosh, this goes back several years ago. A number of communities came together, and there's an opiate settlement that together we are going for, and this will be tonight, 25-138. And we need suspension of the rule and emergency passage now because of the forms that need to be completed and joined with the other communities for this settlement. Are there any questions on this topic? Okay, thank you. We're going to go now over to Human Resources. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. On the Human Resources end, I'm going to be reporting on a civil service rule change. It's temporary legislation 25-139, and it really deals mainly with the process that civil service and the police department's going to use with regard to lateral hires that come in for the first time, lattery entry. And basically what they're doing, if you look at the ordinance, it is in red, at least in my packet, if the number exceeds 10, then civil service will review them to determine the top 10 candidates, and those top 10 candidates will then go on to take the test. Then if someone ties relative to the test, then military experience will be used as a tiebreaker at that time. So civil service is in the process of doing that. Again, it's temporary legislation, 25-139. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith on this topic? Seeing none. Anything else, Mr. Smith?
Nothing else in this regard.
Thank you. We're going to move on now to Mr. Cause with Public Safety and Health Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. The first item that I have is the Tactical Emergency Medical Services with University Hospitals for the Eastern Lorraine County Emergency Response Team, LCERT. So what this is, a couple of years ago, the city of Avon Lake joined with the cities of Avon and North Ridgeville and formed the Eastern Lorraine County Emergency Response Team, otherwise known as LCERT. It's essentially, we left the county SWAT and formed our own similar body here with these Eastern Lorraine County communities. As a part of forming that group, the cities needed to partner with a local medical provider for oversight, which is essential for that group, and they had been partnering with MetroHealth. There were some issues with MetroHealth over the last couple of years that led the communities, the three communities, to make the determination that they wanted to move on from MetroHealth and partner with UH on this. So what we have in our packet, in our city council packet, is ordinance number 25-140, which basically authorizes the mayor to enter into the agreement with university hospitals as a part of this for LCERT. To be noted that the city of Avon has already passed the same piece of legislation. I don't know where North Ridgeville is on it, but they'll be doing there soon. I did speak to Assistant Chief Steve Peter, who's in the audience tonight, and he indicated that three readings on this is fine with this. So it's my intention to go three readings on this. We do have it on for first reading tonight.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments on this topic? Seeing none. We're going to move on then. Mr. Cause, you have another item.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. The second item is the use of an unneeded vehicle for training purposes, and this is Resolution Number 25-143. And this would be the donation of one of the vehicles in use by the Avon Lake Fire Department, which is at the end of its life. It's a 2014 vehicle, and it needs a lot of work. I spoke with Assistant Chief Peter about this last week, and it's pushing close to $10,000 in repairs that it needs. The transmission is blown, and it's at the end of its life anyway. It was due to be replaced. So what the recommendation is from the Fire Department and the administration is to use this vehicle for training purposes. I believe it would be used for Jaws of Life and Extraction, that type of training, I believe. And that type of training, as I was talking with Assistant Chief Peter, you really can't put a price tag on that. It's invaluable when you can actually do that type of training on an actual vehicle, and you can't simulate that any other way. So the vehicle basically has no value at this point, but the value it will give for our Fire Department to do the training that they need to do is invaluable. Again, I asked them about the timeframe on this, and they said that this training would not be scheduled anyway until sometime in October, so he was perfectly fine with three readings. So we have the first reading tonight, and I will go three readings on it with the emergency.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none. Anything else, sir?
No, that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on now to the Public Service Committee. We have one item. You remember back in March when city council authorized the mayor to apply for an Ohio Department of Natural Resources Division of Forestry grant, and at that point in time, the process of applying was started. It was noted that because the monies were given to the state of Ohio from the federal government, the federal government preferred at that point in time that zip codes that were in the disadvantaged zip code list would be the first to be supplied. So this is round two, and at this point in time, we are not, as you can imagine, we're not in that list. Therefore, we needed to build our need for this $100,000 grant, which we think we've done a very good job for. Part of the process of finishing that up is for city council to pass a resolution in support of the implementation of that grant if we should be getting it. And tonight, it's on, you'll find it on the 25-138. I'm asking for suspension of the rule and emergency passage because tomorrow the grant is being uploaded. It needs to be in front of the Division of Forestry by Wednesday, and there's only two items left. It's this particular item that council will be voting on tonight, and also from the Public Works Department, there needs to be a signature from the director of that department according to the Division of Forestry as of Wednesday, and then we can upload it. Are there any questions on this particular item? Comments? Okay, seeing none. We will move on now to Planning Commission. Mr. Smith, it's back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. The first thing that I have is the preliminary plan for Harbor Crest Townhomes was in front of Planning Commission on August 5. That had been sent back to them for, at the previous Planning Commission meeting, for some further discussion about a couple of things, and particularly the entrance onto 83. And after discussion, it was determined that the best option was going to be this option two, which included a left-hand turn lane so that there could be a little bit of stacking there. So the motion will include that as option two, and, let me see, and then there was some discussion about the width of the cul-de-sac or the entryway on the back of it, or, and on the, would be the southern end of it, and it was determined that that needed to be 22 feet, and that was also suggested and approved by the Planning Commission. That item was approved by Planning Commission 520. There were a couple of folks that worked there, but 22 foot in that regard to the stub street that was there. And we wanted to make sure that everybody knew that there was a stub street there as well. The next item was two items by Ford Motor Company.
If we could hold on to this one, please, first. Are there any comments or questions on this particular one before we move on? Because I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Smith.
Sure.
Because of how the packet was sliced and diced, we could fit it onto our papers.
Which packet?
We're talking about the whole two one we just finished. You just talked about. If we could go back to that one, it looks as though AVERI Lane is the one that's going on to Avon Beldon. Is that a private road or is that a public road?
Those are public roads. Private?
That's a private road? Okay. What about Audrey Lane? That is going to dead-end into that guest parking with Landscape Mound. Is that a private also? That's also private. So just to reiterate on what you were saying, Mr. Smith, Audrey Lane's going to dead-end into a Landscape Mound with guest parking, and then what about AVERI Lane? Where does that terminate? I'm trying to, oh, here it is. That has guest parking on the side, not at the end, so there's no mound there. Is that correct?
I don't have this, I don't think I have this packet that everybody else got.
It's right, it's the very last page. Flip it over in the back. Maybe Mr. Sailor could answer the question. He's in the audience.
What's the question? I'm sorry.
The question is, Audrey Lane dead-ends with guest parking on the side, but there's no mound.
Correct.
And that's the north and south street?
Correct.
Okay, and that's a private street? Okay, very good. I just want to make sure everybody understood that these are all private streets. So they're going to be forming their own HOA then, Mr. Smith? All right, thank you. Any further questions from anybody? Okay, now, Mr. Smith, go on to your next item, please.
Ford Motor Company had two requests in front of Planning Commission. One was a request for a new vehicle test track which is at the northern portion of the property. And while it sounds like it's exciting things, they said that the most that the vehicles get up to is about 15 miles an hour, so I wouldn't think that's too exciting. There is a new stormwater, and that was approved 5 to nothing, and a new stormwater retention basin, which is going to be over, which people should be able to see as they drive down Miller Road. It's probably going to be about, and this is just a guess by me, 500 feet north of the railroad tracks in that area is a retention basin, based on all the new construction that they have going on, and that was also approved 5 to nothing. That's all I have on that unless anyone has any other questions that I can't answer.
So, sir, the second one does not need consumatic action. Is that correct?
No, it does not need any consumatic action, and the first one's just a motion that I'll be making when, at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments on these items? Seeing none. Thank you, SERP, for his presentation. We're going to move on. Now we're at legislation and second readings, and there's two items on the second readings. The first one has to do with ordinance number 25-134, and this is, we had this before the recess. It had to do with the municipal tree ordinances and the updates that were there. Are there any questions on that particular item? Okay, and the second one, Mr. Smith, ordinance 25-136.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you. Thank you. That's a holdover from a previous meeting, which is the vacation of a portion of the right-of-way of Shields Avenue for the Utilities Department for their expansion of their utilities building over on Miller Road. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that particular item? Okay, we're going to move along now to miscellaneous business and announcements. At this point in time, is there anything that anybody wants to share? Yes, sir?
Yes. I didn't know if I wanted to do it during this portion or the next portion, but I suppose I'll do it now. This year's Boo by the Woods and Trail of Haunted Tales in the Haunted Library will take place on Thursday, October the 9th, and Saturday, October the 11th. The 11th is the big day with the festival and the outdoor trail and the indoor haunted house. The 9th, which is a Thursday, is just the indoor haunted house. But tickets for both of them will go on sale on September the 17th. That is a Wednesday. So be watching on the City Facebook page and the City website. That's the only way to purchase the tickets is online through there. So make a plan to get the tickets because they always go pretty quickly. But Wednesday, September the 17th, the tickets will go on sale that morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Exciting, and they usually are out by the end of the day.
If that.
If that. Any comments on this particular one? Okay, the next one is going to come from me. So you notice, Council, at your table here, that we have 220 in front of you with no markings on it. That means that it's up on the Internet. So all of our ordinances through the summer have been placed up on the Internet. They're up to date. I'm very excited about that. I'm excited that all of our minutes from all of our committee meetings are up to date. And you'll find out at the next meeting that all of our minutes from our council meetings are up to date. So we're going to be starting September fresh and new. And I want to thank our Clerk Valerie Ross Maron and our Deputy Clerk Ramona Bogans. They've been working very, very hard during our break. Thank you. Any additional miscellaneous items? If not, we're going to adjourn this meeting, and in just a moment, we're going to go over to our council meeting. Thank you. Ready? Good evening. For those of you that have just tuned in, this is August the 25th, and this is the City Council meeting. And we're all going to rise while Mr. Cause leaves us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Cause. Mrs. Ross Maron, please read the rule.
Mr. Arnold.
Here.
Mrs. Fendervash.
Here.
Ms. Gentry. Mr. Cause.
Here.
Mr. Shamir.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Zuber. Mayor Speltzel.
Here.
Law Director Ebert.
Here.
Finance Director Crossy.
Here.
Public Works Director Liskovic.
Here.
Thank you. Does anybody have an issue with the two council people that are not here? I heard from both of them. Mr. Zuber's on vacation, and Ms. Gentry is dealing with a health issue, and we wish her the best. We wish both of them the best. Any comments? Okay, seeing none. For those of you that have just tuned in, I am going to be making a statement because we did have a change in our chapter 220, right before we went on recess, and that's the process of City Councils. The Avon Lake City Council is committed to conducting the city's business in an open, transparent, and respectful manner that upholds the public's trust. Council must balance the public's right to free speech under the First Amendment with the need to maintain order and conduct the city's business efficiently. Comments must remain focused on issues and avoid personal, impertinent, slanderous, abusive, discriminatory, harassing, or profane remarks. Criticism may be directed at actions, but not at personal character. Speech that devolves into personal name-calling insults or attacks can be regulated when it undermines this forum's purpose or disrupts proceedings. Violations of Council's rules are disruptive to the orderly conduct of meetings. They delay city business, they distract participants, they interfere with the public's ability to listen and engage, and they may chill the willingness of others to participate. In addition, such conduct may violate the city's anti-discrimination, harassment-free workplace policy. The presiding officer has a duty to protect council members, the administration, and staff from discriminatory or harassing remarks. Such conduct will not be tolerated. These comments are directed to all participants, council members, city staff, and members of the public. We are all expected to maintain civility. With the recent revision to Chapter 220, public input now takes place at the beginnings of the meetings. Members of the public may speak up to five minutes on any topic, except at work sessions where remarks must be limited to just that topic at hand. Offensive language will not be permitted. If such language does not cease after a warning, the speaker will forfeit the remainder of their time. Continued disruption may result in the individual being directed to leave the chamber. Public comments are a valuable part of our meetings, and we welcome all viewpoints on city issues. However, this is not the appropriate forum to raise or resolve personnel matters involving individual city employees. Those concerns should be directed through the city's administrative or human resources processes. These guidelines ensure that public participation remains productive and that employees who are here to serve the community are not subjected to personal attacks in this limited forum. Thank you. We're now at the point of correspondence. I'm sorry, to the approval of minutes. There are four different minutes we're going to be approving. We're going to be doing them one at a time, June 9th. Have I had a chance to receive them and to review them? Yes? Okay. Is there any discussion about changes or updates? Seeing none, then through general consent, they will be accepted as printed and produced. June 23rd, 2025. Have I had a chance to review them? Any changes, updates? Okay, then those also will be accepted through general consensus as they are printed and produced. July 7th, everyone has had a chance to review them? Any updates? Seeing no comments, then those will be accepted as printed and produced. July 14th, any changes on July 14th? See head shaking, no? Then those will be, through general consensus, will be accepted as printed and produced. Now we're going to move along to correspondence. Correspondence? Mr. Shamir?
So I've had a number of correspondents. I'll go through them. First one is related to Bayview Drive and the West Winds, where the Illuminating Company has been doing excavation and replacement and repairs from what seems to be for about seven years. So some yards have been dug up over the past seven years multiple times, and residents have been without power, on and off, multiple times. So when Ms. Gentry comes in, I wanted to, along with her, have a conversation with Illuminating Company to get an idea of what the Illuminating Company's plans for that project is, what their schedule and timeline looks like, because the residents are pretty much fed up with the consistent construction that goes on and off in the same yard over and over, as well as with the power outages. Now, within that same area, a number of residents have also discussed, there's a park that sits behind, which there are a number of electric bikes that transsect through the park's right-of-way, which is effectively a sidewalk. And it's the width of a sidewalk, with people walking their dogs, having to jump out of the road, or trying to stay safe. So these are the two issues that came from that group of residents. Another group of residents, which I've had a conversation with, and that is with respect to a paper street within Ward 1, which, from what I understand, that is Lakeland Avenue, and it sits directly behind Cove Avenue. And on the other side of it is West Wind Drive. So it sits between Cove and West Winds, where these residents, from what my understanding is, for the past six or seven years, have been trying to get the paper street completed. They were asked to do a signature petition, which they had completed, and that petition was submitted, and they had spoken with Mr. Joe Wright and with Colleen as well, and they seemed to be getting nowhere. So they wanted a forum to have a discussion, and I thought I would bring that up before taking it over to Planning and Mr. Smith to have their discussion heard.
Thank you.
Those are just two things. Thank you.
If I could, so we can help you. Mr. Liskovic, on the first one, CEI, would you want to be involved with the two council people to try to review what is going on, why it's going on?
Absolutely.
And the part that, by having it over and over again in the same yard, I don't know why. But I do remember years ago that they were trying to switch that street to a different, whatever they call it, it was going into Bay Village. And because when Bay Village would go out, that street would go out, but the streets around them would not go out. It was just very strange. So you might want to do some history checking in that area.
Yeah. I would love to be part of that conversation.
Great. Thank you. And I'll reach out to you if I can get the contact person at Illuminating Company as well. That would be great. Thank you.
And then the police chief, I'm sure is going to want to have a conversation with you about the e-bikes in the park. And Mr. Thatch, Aaron Thatch, he has some rules already that are with the Police Department on what is permissible and what isn't permissible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with correspondence? Yes?
Yes, I do. I received an email from Lori Glenn in support of a gate at the Hanford Boulevard property or Boulevard Street location, and I received another email from Carrie Galudson in opposition of the gate.
Thank you. Anybody else has correspondence on any topic? Okay, now we're going to move along to public input. Members of the audience shall be permitted to speak up to five minutes on any topic, and the code that we're referencing is section 220.11G1. Anybody want to come forward? Five minutes, any topic? I see no one coming forward, even though we have people in the audience tonight. Okay, now we're going to move along to our reports. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Council President. A few updates. It goes me here. I got a lot happened over the summer. I talked earlier at the collective committee meeting about the traffic study. I'll just reiterate that here. Trans Systems, who's doing the study, finalized the traffic counts, and they're currently in review internally with their company. They hope to have that done the first week of September. They're in the midst of finalizing the traffic routing for the four build condition scenarios. We expect those results in the forthcoming weeks. Once those are done, we will set up an internal meeting to have all that reviewed, and then once that is complete, we will schedule a public meeting to share the results. I would anticipate that would either be late September or possibly early October at this point, according to their schedule. Alps update. If you have not been by Alps, I encourage you to take a look. Equipment came in, and came in last week, and we are well on the way to getting that completed this week, the installation, at least of the first round of equipment. So that arrived last Tuesday, the 19th, as the site work was being completed. And again, we anticipate the installation of all that equipment that arrived last week to be completed this week. The site work will continue, including the one-quarter-mile loop trail that goes around the playground area. We do have some other equipment that has not yet arrived, and we're hoping that will come in soon. Basically, we are ahead of schedule as it currently stands, so that's great. I would say, I'm sure there's a lot of curiosity. We do have the area fenced off. I was walking my dog yesterday and noticed some kids on the playground already. It's not quite ready, so obviously, it's a construction site. So we don't want anybody going within that area. Again, the construction of the equipment is not even done. We don't want anybody getting hurt. So obviously, please stay out of the area. While I understand the curiosity, it'd be no time before it's up and running and you can get on that. Walker Road rehabilitation, we call it Phase 5, which runs from Moore to the old railroad crossing, began today. I drove by it before the meeting today, and they're already doing stormwater work. So that is in progress. We're projected that's going to take approximately 60 days. Traffic, obviously, is limited to westbound traffic only from Moore Road, and on our website, we have detour maps for those who want to go on and see what that looks like. We've also been posting on Facebook as well. Ear Review, I want to announce that we have been in talks with the schools to purchase Ear Review School, and that would remain standing, which is good. I think the community wants to see Ear Review remain. The schools wants to see Ear Review remain, and I think we, as an administration, would like to see that remain as well. So the idea is, we're in negotiations currently. We'll have further information as it comes to be, but we're in discussions with them to purchase Ear Review. So I just want to announce that. And speaking of the schools, U.S. News and World Report had put out their annual rankings of schools. Avon Lake High School was ranked number one in Lorain County, which is great news, and number eight in the Cleveland metropolitan area, and 25th in Ohio. Again, I think we come accustomed to that, but it is quite a feather in the cap for our community to have such a quality school here in Avon Lake. The power plant demolition continues. Environmental assessment work is being carried out collaboratively between Verdantis, which is our contracted environmental professionals, and the Deegan Group, which is Alurg's environmental professionals. So that work continues. And if you've been by, you can see through the fencing that there's a lot of work that has occurred, and they're projecting at least another month or so of that type of work. The concrete street program, I'm sure Mr. Liskovic may be able to add to this when I'm done, and he has his report, but the majority of the work has been completed. There are punchless items, however, that need to be completed for both Stony Brook and Brunswick. That punch list will be addressed by the contractors in September, so have no fear. There are things that need to be done, and we're aware of that. Contractors are aware of that, and they'll be getting in to complete those. A lot of upcoming events. Apparently Saturdays are going to be packed with activities for the next couple of months. I want to highlight a few of these. Saturday, September 13th, from 9:00 to noon, there'll be a Community Shred Day. I know that's a big item for the community, and that will be at the Public Works Department. Again, that's Saturday, the 13th, from 9:00 to noon. Mr. Cause very eloquently discussed the Boo by the Woods. Tickets that go on sale September 17th. Big Splash Dog Swim is set for Saturday, September 6th. That's when the pool closes, the last day. You can register and have your dogs come out for the big swim with all the other dogs. It's a great event. Been there myself. Very well attended, and the dogs love it, obviously. Saturday, September 20th, from 10:00 to 2:00 is Big Trucks, another extremely popular community event. And again, that is Saturday, the 20th. September 27th is Homecoming, so we have a parade that begins at 10:00, and that'll kick off at the high school. And immediately following the homecoming parade, there'll be a Free Fall Fest, which will run until 1:00 at Blesser Field. Trick or Treat is tentatively scheduled for Friday, October 31st. And I say tentatively only because there could be an issue with Avon Lake Shoreman Football Team, if they get to the playoffs, there could be an issue with potential safety concerns, but we will evaluate that as we go. But as of right now, it is scheduled for Friday, October 31st. And so that is all I have for the upcoming events. A couple more items I wanted to mention. We have, and thanks to the Public Works Department, Baggage Car 38, which is on display at Stop 65, which was generously donated by Tom Patton, who also donated paint to rehab it. The Public Works Department repainted that. It looks fantastic, right down to the stencils. Great job by the Public Works Department. That was a lot of work, and we appreciate what they did there. I did get one correspondence I want to mention in my report, which was from Camp Imagine. If you're not familiar with Camp Imagine, that's a program that's been in Avon Lake for over 20 years. It is a summer program lasting six weeks, and it serves special-needs kids in the community. And they wanted to thank the city of Avon Lake for their continued support for Camp Imagine. A wonderful program, great success, and it really, the kids love it. And it's just an extension of grade school students being able to have some activities in the summer. And I do want to... And I, I do wanna acknowledge again that tomorrow night at the Guardians game, Mike Menino, our very own Mike Menino, will be throwing out the first pitch, which is pretty exciting. Mike Menino's like Mr. Baseball here in Avon Lake, so, great guy. And a well-deserved honor for him. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayor? The only comment I wanna make, Mr. Mayor, is that, um, that shred day, uh, September thirteenth, is, they're also gonna have Habitat, uh, for Humanity at the location down at the Public Service Department. So this is, um, first, moving both of them together. And I think that that's great. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayor? Okay, we're gonna go on now to the council president's report. Um, one thing I wanted to remind all council is that the H R director has asked for a form to be completed and filled out, um, having to do with a, uh, program that the insurance company needs all of us to sign. And if you have any, uh, boards or commissions that feed up through your committee, please make sure that they all sign it also. Thank you. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention is that we're gonna, this, the administration's already started working on the twenty-twenty-six, the twenty-twenty-six fiscal year budget. And the council meetings that we're going to be having, these are work sessions. The first one's going to be Saturday, October the fifteenth, from eight until noon. November the eighth, from eight until noon. November the fifteenth, from eight until noon. And the public is invited. Um, the goal is to have the first reading for the twenty-twenty-six budget on November the twenty-fourth. The second reading on December the eighth. And the third and final reading on December the fifteenth for the twenty-twenty-six budget. Are there any questions? Okay, then we'll move along now to the law director.
Thank you, Madam President. No report this evening. Welcome back, everybody.
Thank you. Any questions for the law director? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I just wondered if there's been any, uh, movement on the short-term rentals that we, uh, put the moratorium on for ninety days.
We have a legisla-, we got a draft ready to go. So we could probably present that to the committee, I mean, the council, to take a look at.
Great, thank you.
Right. So Mrs. Gentry's committee's coming up, right? And, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Arnold has the ad hoc, I mean, the first short-term rentals.
Right. Yeah, so we didn't meet anytime over the summer, but we're looking to get back, probably meet in the next couple of weeks then.
Thank you.
If I could, one thing, it's, it's amazing how many cities are looking at this right now around us. You know, various other ones have asked about copies of any legislation we have. So it's prevalent throughout the, the cities.
Thank you for your work on it. Anybody else? Okay, then we'll move along to the finance director. Any reports?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, just that the twenty-twenty-four audit is proceeding as expected and we're hoping to wrap up by the end of September if all things align. And also, just, um, on the heels of what the council president mentioned is that the twenty-twenty-six budget is underway. So looking forward to what the departments have for us.
Thank you. Any questions for the finance director? Okay, we're gonna move on now to the public works director, Mr. Liskovic.
Uh, yeah, good evening. Uh, I know the mayor covered, covered a handful of my, uh, updates. Uh, but in addition to, uh, Alps, Walker, Phase Five, uh, work done on the baggage car and, uh, the punch list that's, uh, remaining on the concrete streets. Um, we also have, uh, upcoming, uh, roof replacement for the Folger home. So, uh, please pardon our dust while, uh, we're conducting this, uh, necessary improvement to the building. Uh, during this time, we ask that residents, uh, stay out of the parking lot and also stay off the porch and the general vicinity, um, just as the contractor's working through that area, just to make sure everybody stays safe, uh, during the course of this project. Um, weather permitting, we expect it to be done in about a week. Uh, but, uh, Mother Nature has started this week off a little wet with us, for us, but, uh, we'll, we'll keep working with the contractor on that. Um, Morewood Midship Walker, R R F B project, uh, the concrete, uh, work that was, uh, slated as part of this project has been completed by the contractor. Uh, still awaiting the equipment, uh, but they had a subcontractor in, uh, and available on the schedule to get those, uh, ramps removed and, uh, re, new curbs installed and, uh, and the, uh, area backfilled to, to prepare for the actual crossing. Um, and then, let's see, the final thing I have additionally is our contracted crack seal, uh, contractor is doing this week to start the, uh, uh, contracted portion of crack seal, uh, throughout the city. It'll be sections of Walker Road as we had, uh, listed earlier this year and the length of J Cox. And that's all I have this evening.
Mr. Liskovic, um, regarding the Folger home, would the contractor or the city be yellow-taping off the area to keep the public, uh?
Uh, it'll be a combination of both.
That, that will happen, though?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. And I noticed, uh, driving through the Westwinds, there's quite a bit of crack seal work that was done. I believe maybe even some catch basins. Is that correct?
Yeah, we've done, uh, a fair amount of work throughout the Westwinds area from, uh, crack seal work to partial depth repairs to catch basin rebuilds. Um, so, uh, we've spent quite some time over there. And in addition to some other areas in the city too, with curb replacements, uh, additional concrete repairs and such, um, slab repairs and stuff like that. So a lot of work, uh, taken or completed this summer with regards to repair roads.
Then can we turn the topic over to the concrete street program? Um, I noticed we mentioned that, uh, Stony Brook, um, which is in my ward, and Brunswick, which is in Mr. Shamir's ward, um, the punch list will be, will be processed in September. Correct?
Yeah, we're gonna be meeting with the contractor to go over the punch list and, and they'll give us the schedule and that goes with it, but yes.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, um, any other questions for Mr. Liskovic? Yes, or Mr. Shamir?
Uh, just as a follow-on, again, thank you for, for all the work you guys did, uh, within the Westwinds to, to do the patchwork. Uh, when it comes to Brunswick, uh, I've noticed in the last rain, we had a bit of a flooding. Actually, the, the midsection of that road, uh, got flooded, uh, quite a bit. And I'm wondering if, if, uh, the contractor will do video inspection of the storm sewer prior to completion and finalization of that job or not? Thank you.
Um, with regards to that, uh, if you may, if I, if I may? So, so the, the inspection was not part of, part of the terms of contract. Uh, however, with the, uh, inlet protection there. Um, and I, I've spoken with a couple residents, uh, with regards to it. We've had, uh, contractor service to inlet protection, um, because typically the pores in that fabric get clogged, which obviously slow your infiltration down. Um, we've had it serviced, uh, I don't remember the exact date, but it was fairly recent. And if it needs to be serviced again, we'll make sure it's, it's addressed.
Well, the, the reason I brought it up is I noticed that several of them did not have the protection. And the protection was partial to one side or another side. So the flow, the inflow is what concerns me and what, what it was, uh, taking in. So the section closest to Lake Road is where the protection was missing or partially missing. Thank you.
I'll look into it.
Perhaps it was there and it was removed throughout the process, which I'm sure Mr. Liskovic will be following up on. Any other questions on this topic? Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move now along to our standing committees. And the first one would be Building and Utilities with Ms. Gentry. Um, does anybody have any comments on that particular one coming up? There will be a meeting coming up next week, is it?
Seventeen.
The seventeen?
With Illuminating Company?
Right, with the Illuminating Company. Okay. Uh, the next one is Mr. Shamir with, uh, SERP.
Yes, uh, we have the deer calling contract, which Mr. Liskovic is working on, uh, which is coming up, uh, next week. The other thing is, uh, the question had come up on the number of deer culled in recent history. So there's been roughly about seven-hundred-and-fifty deer that have been culled between two thousand and eleven and twenty-twenty-five. And that information just, uh, had been asked, uh, and, and that's the data. The other issue is, uh, it's not so much an issue. I think it's a, it's, it's a procedural addition maybe to the parks and, uh, rec, which is an inspection of parks, maybe on a quarterly basis to ensure that there is, uh, uh, it's, it's a safe environment, that there are no runnels at, uh, stormwaters. I know that we had, uh, a few holes near the stormwater drainage areas, uh, within Walker Road Park, which, uh, Mr. Liskovic was kind enough to quickly repair. But if we've got a quarterly program, uh, implemented, maybe we can, uh, kinda remove that threat or risk from, from the city in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Okay, now we're gonna, yes, sir?
Yeah, I can appreciate, uh, Mr. Shamir's comments. We actually did a walkthrough of many of our parks recently, uh, myself, Mr. Liskovic and Mr. Fatch. We also identified areas where we had some trees that needed to be removed. And, uh, uh, some of them were, were, uh, pretty important to be removed quickly and that was been taken care of. So I can appreciate what you're saying. Uh, they do have to be checked regularly to make sure that we've eliminated as many hazards as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, the next one's gonna be, uh, Mr. Arnold with Economic Development.
Thank you. No report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Arnold? Next one is Finance. I'm gonna have a report. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Uh, just, uh, was wondering if we have any details on the economic resiliency completion, uh, on the report and the matrix and, uh, responsibility matrix that we discussed, if that's been completed or close to completion. Thank you.
Mr. Arnold, would you like to? Would you want Mr. Mayor to?
I'll defer to the mayor.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
So we've had a couple of discussions about the, the, the plan recently. Um, as far as the matrix go, I don't believe that's been completed. Uh, we're looking at taking both the comprehensive land plan, the resiliency study, some of the current things we're doing. Uh, we've had constant, uh, conversations with, uh, Kleinfelder and trying to put all that together into a singular economic development policy, uh, going along with what the process was.
This will probably go hand in hand with the new budget coming up too, I would imagine, for implementation. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah, I'm not sure of, uh, budgetary requirements yet, but as we go through, we might identify something. Yes.
Thank you. All right, now we will move on to Finance. Um, and in lieu of Mr. Subin not being here, I'm going to speak about two items that are on the agenda tonight. Um, one is the opiates statement. It is twenty-five dash one-three-eight. I will be asking for suspension of the rule on emergency passage because this needs to be completed by our city, along with others, to join together for the, um, reimbursement funds. Are there any questions on this topic? Okay, then we're gonna move on to the next one. The next one is the budget adjustment. Um, it happens throughout the year to, um, to update the budget. This is number twenty-five dash one-four-two. Again, this is gonna be suspension of the rule on emergency passage so that it can be completed, so we can move on with paying those bills. Any questions? Okay, I'm gonna move on now to Human Resources with Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Uh, as we discussed earlier, tonight on the agenda is the, uh, the ordinance, uh, for civil service relative to the, uh, transfers of, uh, of, of, uh, in the police department and the lateral transfers and some, some changes that they made. Um, and, uh, other than that, I think that our next meeting is the fifteenth, I think, of September. Uh, the Human Resources Committee, I'll meet at six o'clock here. Is that right, the fifteenth?
September eighth, you're the second Monday. September eighth.
Oh, September, okay. I thought, well, I thought with the, uh, not having a meeting on this, on the eighth, that we...
Uh, Labor Day is on the first.
Pardon me?
Labor Day is on the first.
Right. So we don't kick that, okay. So it'll be the eighth then. All right, thank you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, then we're gonna move along to Public Safety and Health with Mr. Koz.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. The next meeting of the Public Safety and Health Committee will be, excuse me, on Tuesday, September the sixteenth, at five-thirty P M. The council chair, please.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Koz? Okay, we're gonna move on now to Public Service, which I chair. There's two items that are before us tonight. Um, one is the, um, O D N R Forestry Grant, the implementation support letter that I'd like to have council vote on for suspension of the rule on emergency passage, so it can be uploaded tomorrow with the grant application for a hundred thousand dollars. Any questions on that one? Okay, the next one is the tree ordinance. This will simply be the second reading. Again, um, the tree ordinance, I'll go into more detail when we get to it. But it is updating our tree ordinance so that it is in compliance with the N C three-hundred-A, along with the, um, I S A requirements and the American Public Works Association standards. Second reading, any questions? Okay, now while I have the floor, I failed to go over something that might have helped you, Mr. Smith. Um, the next C C M is going to be September the second. It's a Tuesday, uh, due to Labor Day being on Monday, the September the first. And the next council meeting will be September the eighth. Okay, all right. Moving right along?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir?
Well, it's, it's, I'm not on Planning Commission yet. Planning Commission would meet on that, the second as well.
They have moved their meeting to the third, Wednesday the third.
Okay, I'm really, thank you.
We're catching up. It's okay. And then, Mr. Smith, you are next as Planning Commission, if you'd like to give us a report.
The next meeting of Planning Commission's gonna be September third, Wednesday, September third. Yeah, in the meantime, there's, uh, one item on the agenda tonight and that is a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Harbor Crest Town Homes, which I discussed in the, uh, collective committee meeting, which included the left-hand turn lane with a little bit of stacking ability to come out of that onto eighty-three and turn left. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Mr. Mayor, you're next with Zoning Board.
Thank you. The next meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals is this Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, and there are five cases to be heard.
It's gonna be an active night.
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Mayor? Okay, Mr. Shamir, you're up for Parks and Rec Commission.
The only thing that I've got is, uh, the issue that was discussed with inspection as part of the C R P. Nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Shamir? Now, special committees. Um, the only one I'm gonna be reporting on is the Tree Commission. Their next meeting will be September the tenth. That's a Wednesday at six P M. It's gonna be at the old Firehouse. And I want to share with you that this past Wednesday, two Ohio Division of Foresters were here, um, with four of us from the Tree Commission. And we were going through an exercise that's called a Tree Index. And for those of you that live on, um, Cherry Lane, Yoder, Parsons, Division, Midway, that entire area over there, Sunset, um, I know I ran into a lot of residents I knew. Uh, you saw us in our yellow vests. And yes, we did beat the rain. We were out there. We were probing the earth to see how compact the land was. And we were measuring the tree lawns and we were looking at, uh, what trees are there for biodiversity. And we were putting together a program, a plan, that the Tree Commissioners, who are taking the Division of Forestry's classes, need to complete. It's, it's the end of their sophomore year, going into their junior year. Um, I'm very pleased to share with you that when they graduate, um, this will be the first time that we have five members that will have completed the, uh, Tree, um, Commission Academy with the Division of Forestry. It's quite, um, it's quite a thing to be proud of here in the city of Avon Lake. Any other special committees? Okay, if not, then we're gonna move on. First motion is with you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we approve the preliminary plat for Harbor Crest Town Homes, a seventy-three unit townhome subdivision located at the southeast corner of Walker Road and Avon-Beldon State Route eighty-three, as recommended by the Planning Commission, August fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, subject to the following conditions: that the entrance on Avon-Beldon State Route eighty-three be aligned with Huntington Bank per alternative two and including the left-hand turn, including the left turn lane.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith and Mr. Koz?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um, not a question, but it's more of a comment. When this item, uh, originally came forward as a, um, change of zoning for that piece of property, I voted no on that and, um, it ended up passing to rezone that with a four-to-three vote. Um, as has been my, um, my history, whenever I vote no on one of these things, it doesn't go my way. Once it passes, I try to make that, um, as acceptable- I try to make that as acceptable and as safe for the community as possible. So the vote that I took to rezone it failed. So at that point, it goes into the second phase where this is going in, and my votes then need to be handled in a way that makes this a safer way for the community to have this project go in. And I'm happy to see that the Planning Commission did their due diligence on this and that this has been reviewed. And this is the first step on this, but it looks like these are positive changes that will minimize some of the concerns that were brought up during the rezoning phase. So I will be voting yes on this.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else with comments? Aligning it is always the way that we have been, over the years on planning, have been instructed to go forward much safer. And I think that's what the bottom line is, to make it really safe. Okay, Mrs... Oh, yes, sir, Mr. Shamir.
Is there any plans to look at a comprehensive traffic study, traffic assessment of that whole area in the near future to understand what controls need to go into place to allow that area to develop in a safe manner?
Mr. Smith, would you like to answer this? Or do you want Mr. Mayor to answer?
I would defer to the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we've had a lot of discussions about this, and obviously it originated when the Harbor Crest development was first proposed. A lot of the discussion was around whether there should be a third lane running from Diamond Head all the way to Walker Road. Those things have been under consideration. We're also looking at the development there and discussing tax increment financing for these developments, which would provide funding to be able to not only study this area, but to make substantive changes to alleviate any traffic concerns at the entire Walker 83 intersection. So those are in play. They're going to take some time, obviously. But yes, we have definitely considered that. We do have the preliminary study. While not exhaustive, we do have a study that indicated that the traffic coming out of that subdivision wouldn't negatively impact it. But we still have traffic issues in the area, nonetheless, that we have to address.
Mr. Shamir, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, as along with Mr. Cause, I voted no. And I believe that if we are going to do a development, having it laid out, planned out, written down so that everyone understands and that there is no misunderstanding in the future, it would be helpful. To talk about the May is actually a great first step. But I think we're beyond that first step, and we need to look at a strategy on how we will. So the May has already passed, and we should be at the will stage, whether we're going to do tax increment financing. It requires a strategy. What is that strategy? If we're going to look at traffic, we know roughly about the number of residents that will be added and the number of vehicles. So it's just a putting it together, putting it in black and white would help everyone sitting here to better understand and to better elaborate what the future is going to look like. And with that, you know, now we're beyond the approval and changing of the zoning. I will be voting yes, but I will be asking the question of where are we with the planning and where are we with the strategy from this point onward? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Mr. Mayor, here's your hand up.
So as far as the strategy goes, you're going to be seeing, coming to this council, the strategy on the tax increment financing and how that's going to affect both the study and the... any changes that'll be required at that intersection.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on this topic? Okay, Mrs. Rossmarin, we're ready. Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes, this has passed. Now we're at legislation, second readings. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, ordinance number 25-134.
An ordinance amending Chapter 1018 Municipal Tree Ordinance and codified ordinance Section 1065.99 Enforcement and Penalty.
Thank you. This is the second reading. And as has been said in the past, part of what we did was to update the language. They no longer use the word municipal, so we needed to use the word city throughout. We defined what ANSI A300 is, what an arborist is, a caliper, critical root zone, diameter breast height, that's where you measure the tree from. What is the International Society of Arbiculture? What is a master tree plan? And on and on and on, all the way over to 1018.031, which is the description in detail of a master tree plan. We moved on to the pruning of trees. And specifically, I want to point out that chestnut and oak are not to be pruned at this time of year only when they are dormant, December, January, that time, to try to prevent the spread of the oak wilt disease, which is already here in Avon Lake. The only time that you would prune an oak or a chestnut tree would be if it's hazardous and there's an emergency that affects the public health and safety. We moved on into the penalty, bringing it up to date with the Ohio revise code. Are there any questions on this reading? Second reading? Okay, thank you. Then we're going to move on then to ordinance number 25-136. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance approving a vacation for a portion of the Shields Avenue and Electric Boulevards, rights of way, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. This is the vacation that we've discussed prior regarding allowing the utilities to expand. And we're going to be vacating a portion of Shields and Electric Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Seeing none, we're now going to move on to first readings. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, resolution number 25-138.
A resolution...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
A resolution authorizing the participation in the Purdue Direct Settlement Agreement and pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. I move for suspension of the rule, requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin? Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes, it has passed. I move for passage of resolution number 25-138. In discussion, this is again a resolution authorizing the Purdue Direct Settlement, as has been described previously. The people of the state of Ohio and its communities, including our city, have been harmed by misfeasance, nonfeasance, malfeasance committed by certain entities within the opiate pharmaceutical supply chain. State of Ohio, its Attorney General and local governments, through their elected representatives and council, are separately engaged in litigation seeking to hold opiate pharmaceutical companies accountable for the damage caused by their misfeasance, nonfeasance, and malfeasance. State of Ohio, through its governor and Attorney General and the local governments, share a common desire to abate and alleviate the impacts of that misfeasance, nonfeasance, and malfeasance throughout the state of Ohio. The state and its local governments, subject to completing formal documents affecting the parties' agreements, have drafted and the city has adopted, hereby reaffirms its adoption of a One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding relating to the allocation and the use of the proceeds. And this is what we have before us at this point in time. And this will be declared to be an emergency measure, the emergency being the immediate preservation of the public health, safety, morals, convenience, and the general welfare of the community, and to ensure prompt pursuant of funds to assist in abating the opiate epidemic throughout the city. Therefore, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from immediately after passage and approval with signature of the mayor. Any questions? Okay, Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes, it has passed, thank you. Ordinance number 25-139. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance amending the rules of the Civil Service Commission and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. This is the first reading of resolution number 25-138. And this is the third time tonight that... Oh, sorry, 139, that we're talking about the Civil Service Commission and the rules regarding how the Police Department and the Civil Service has made some changes to lateral candidates where there are more than 10 applications made, where the... where the... they review the applications that all come in and then give tests to the top 10 in order to try and streamline the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Mr. Cause?
Yeah, thank you. I think another change on here, as I'm reading through this, is... I think it's important to let the public know that one of the changes in here is also adding language that states that candidates must disclose separation from a current or prior law enforcement position because of a disciplinary issue or to avoid a disciplinary action. You know, we've all heard stories about police officers in other communities that may have violated some of the laws or whatever and had to leave under controversial situations, bouncing from city to city. And I'm glad that this language is placed in here. I think it provides the city of Avon Lake the protection, and the residents know that when we are hiring lateral candidates in here, that these are good, clean candidates, and there's no skeletons in the closet or anything like that. They're going to be a surprise or an embarrassment to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Cause about that. I'm sorry I didn't discuss that earlier. But to me, I think everybody in the audience and those looking would probably expect that to be a given, that we expect that from people coming in on lateral transfers. So thank you, Mr. Cause.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to ordinance number 25-140. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a medical direction services agreement for the Tactical Emergency Medical Services, TMS, and related training to the Eastern Lorraine County Emergency Response Team, ELSERT, comprised of the city of Avon, the city of Avon Lake, and the city of North Ridgeville and University Hospital, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cause?
Thank you. This is the first reading of this ordinance number. As I mentioned in the collective committee meeting, when ELSERT was formed, it required partnering with a local health provider. It had been Metro Health. And it's the desire of the three communities to switch that partnership to university hospitals. And this would provide medical control and oversight, and it is required that the city partner with a medical facility. And this was the selection of the three cities and their safety forces.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Cause?
And I do plan to go three full readings on this. Thank you.
Good, good, good. Any questions for Mr. Cause? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to resolution number 25-141. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
A resolution in support of the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, ODNR, Division of Forestry, Ohio's Urban Forestry Grant Application and its implementation, and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of the rule, requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin? Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes, it has passed. I move for passage of resolution number 25-141. In discussion, resolution 25-65 dated March 24th, 2025, authorized the mayor to apply for the $100,000 grants. Council recognizes the importance of sustaining a healthy and resilient urban forest and supports strengthening Avon Lake's long-term strategy for maintaining and improving the tree canopy through enhanced management practices that this grant would make possible. The successful implementation of the Urban Forestry Grant will provide lasting environmental, social, economic benefits for the entire Avon Lake community, including underserved areas identified through canopy and demographic analysis. The Avon Lake Tree Commission in its letter dated August 13th, 2025, expressed strong support for this initiative and confirmed its alignment with the city's newly adopted Tree Commission strategic plan. The council further supports the implementation of the Urban Forestry Grant, if awarded, to strengthen the city's commitment to a sustainable and equitable urban forest and to realize the long-term environmental, social, and economic benefits envisioned. The resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure, the emergency being the necessity to file an application in a timely manner application in a timely manner and to demonstrate council support in order to acquire funds thus as for the public health, safety, and welfare.
Any questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes, thank you. Five minutes passed. Okay, ordinance number 25-142.
An ord...
Mrs. Rossmarin?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 25-19R2 appropriations for fiscal year 2025 and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes, it has passed. I move for passage of ordinance number 25-142. In discussion, this is a budget adjustment, and we do it throughout the year so that the bills can be paid. This is in the amount of $717,152.78. Any comments?
Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes, this has passed. Thank you.
Okay, next is resolution number 25-143. Mrs. Rossmarin?
A resolution authorizing the use of an unneeded and obsolete vehicle for training purposes and subsequent sale of such vehicle for scrap.
Mr. Cause?
Thank you. This is the first reading of three on this resolution. The vehicle in question is, is a vehicle for the Avon Lake Fire Department. It is a 2014 Ford Escape. It has reached the end of its useful life and was, it was already scheduled to be replaced. Just in the last few weeks and months, it has had a series of very expensive breakdowns on it where it now would cost more to fix it than what it's worth. So the suggestion or the recommendation from the administration and the fire department is to use this vehicle for training purposes. And as I mentioned in my comments on the collective committee meeting, that type of training is invaluable, that they get to perform the type of training that they need with fire suppression, extraction, and those types of training with this vehicle. So this is a resolution that would authorize that it be used for that purpose. Speaking with Assistant Police, Fire Chief Steve Peter last week, he did say that that training is not scheduled until October sometime, so we do have time to do three full readings on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from anyone? Okay, Mrs. Rossmarin? Oh, this is just three full readings. Thank you. The next section has to do miscellaneous business and announcements. Does anyone have a topic they want to speak on? Okay, I'm, I'm going to, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Shamir. I have one that follows you.
Just wanted to announce that the next Ward 1 meeting will be tomorrow at the library between 5:30 and 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It's also on the city's website. Thank you, sir. I wanted to speak to you a little bit about what came out of Keep Lorraine County Beautiful. I'm on the county advisory board for that. I was appointed by the county commissioners to serve one of the first terms there. And then, the 2026 Lorraine County Beautiful Day, for those people that are going to want to participate, is going to be May 16th, 2026. Again, May 16th, 2026. They're looking for businesses that want to partner with the county and with the city for that particular day. The next one has to do with the Agricultural Scrap Tire Collection Day, which is going to be September the 25th. The last topic has to be with Divert, D-I-V-E-R-T, Ohio Conference. It's going to be September the 16th through the 18th. This is a conference that is statewide, and it focuses on recycling and litter prevention, keeping items out of the landfill. And that's all that I have at this time. At this point in time, we're going to have a need for an executive session. Mr. Cause?
Thank you. In compliance with Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G2, council will adjourn to executive session to consider the purchase or sale of property for public purposes.
Thank you. Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes, this has passed. The following people will be included in this particular session: all of the elected officials, including the mayor, the law director, along with Rob Monroe, Lou McMahon, Megan Goodecker, Tony Coyne, Karen Perkins, Jeff Duke, and our finance director, Beth Crossy.
Anybody else? I think I have it. Okay, and we are going to be reconvening after the meeting. There will be no votes after this meeting. Okay? Thank you for coming tonight.